Well, good evening. Welcome to the February third, two thousand twenty-one regular session of the La Grande City Council. Uh, before we uh start the formal meeting and I uh call this to order. I want to wish our city manager, Robert Strope, a happy birthday. So, we're.
Thanks, Steve.
I hope you had a good day and maybe a nice meal with your.
Yeah, all going good. Thank you.
Cool. Uh, so with that um little bit of informality, we'll call the meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Steve Clement.
Here.
Gary Lillard. John Bozard.
Here.
David Glade.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Justin Rock.
Here.
Okay, so per O R S one nine two dot six zero six seven zero one. Must be pretty obvious that councilors are participating in this meeting by electronic communication. Uh, we've been doing this now for more months than I really care to. And one of these days, I hope we can uh start seeing, sitting in the same room together again. Moving on to consent agenda, uh I'd like for um personal reasons to remove the second item from the consent agenda. Uh, I am a part owner of side A and I would rather than recuse my, recuse myself from the entire consent agenda, I thought we'd just handle that one separately. Okay. Do I have a motion for consent agenda as amended?
I move we accept the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Steve Clement.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glade.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, uh, public comments.
I'm sorry, Mayor, we'll move that to um after item seven E.
Okay.
Under new business.
Okay, thank you. Robert, any public comments to be read?
Uh, no, your honor.
Okay. Moving then to public hearings. We uh, we opened uh the public hearing um and the, the rules of orders were read at the January sixth meeting. This will be the second reading this evening and um motion to approve the changes that have been presented to us. And with that, I will uh ask Mike Boquist for um staff report.
Uh, thanks, Mayor and Council. I'm just gonna give you the quick uh summary. Uh, so the ordinance that you are being asked to do the second reading is a amendment to our land development code ordinance. Uh, it predominantly applies to all residential zones, all residential properties within the city and the urban growth boundary. And it's in response to legislative requirements that are mandated through House Bill two thousand and one and Oregon Administrative Rule uh six sixty oh four six, I think is, yes. In any way, uh, it requires that all cities of our size, anyway, ten thousand population up to twenty-five are required uh to amend their codes by June of this year to allow for duplexes in all those residential zones. Anywhere where you allow a single-family dwelling, you have to also allow a duplex. And then in considering duplexes, they have to be treated exactly like a single-family home is treated uh through that permitting uh process uh as far as land use goes. And so anyway, the, the code that uh we discussed last month uh kinda outlines all of the different sections within the land development code that uh um are proposed to be amended to add duplexes and to treat them the same as single-family dwellings. And then the only change between last month and this month, uh which uh uh should be reflected in your packet is the discussion item on the downtown zone where we had a uh a business owner request that we allow or consider allowing veterinary clinics and boarding, animal boarding type facilities within the downtown zone. And uh the council uh uh did not support that and asked that that be stricken from the amendments. And so that has been removed and that is not part of uh your decision tonight, uh should you move forward and uh with adoption of this ordinance. Uh, do you have any questions?
Questions for Mike? All right, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Council discussions? Comments? Do we get any more testimony from uh citizens, Robert?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Mike, I don't think we did, did we?
Uh, no, we did not.
Thank you. Right, Gary, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna kinda follow up on comments I had made earlier on this uh subject. You know, obviously, the housing situation is very important. I don't have any real objections with the duplex into the single-family residence zone, any of that. The only part as I've expressed previously, I'm concerned about is that the state has chosen to ignore issues such as the parking. You know, we're gonna have to handle the duplexes the same as a single-family residence when, in fact, they are not. This isn't the first time in my tenure on the camp, but I've seen the state do this kind of thing. Unfortunately, I think it really takes away from something that basically a pretty good concept, but due to this tendency on the part of the state, for lack of a better term, I probably vote no on this. Maintain the symbolic position I've had.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, um, then I will close uh the public hearing and entertain a motion. Can't hear you.
I move that the proposed ordinance adopting land development code amendments, housing-related amendments required by H B two thousand one and O R A six hun- six hundred sixty dash zero four six, be read for the second time by title only, put to a vote and adopted.
Any other conversation? Oh, we need a second?
A second.
Okay, any other council comments? Could, Kayla, could I have a reading of the proposed ordinance for a second time, please?
An ordinance of the city council, the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, repealing ordinance number three two four two series two thousand eighteen and adopting an ordinance of the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, amending various articles, adding new language and recodifying the land development code, ordinance repealing all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an effective date.
All right, um, we've had a reading of the ordinance title. Um, I'll ask for a roll vote then.
Steve Clement.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
No.
John Bozard.
No.
David Glade.
No.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, um, and, and I, I wanna re- uh say that I respect your um, the no votes on this. If I felt there was anything that we could do by, by making that vote, I probably would have gone that way myself. Unfortunately, this is being sort of pushed down on us and we, I'm, I'm pretty sure that it would have happened regardless of whether or not uh we voted yes or no. Um, all right, moving on, we have no unfinished business. Um, the first item of new business is a resolution to consider annexation of property at sixteen oh four, sixteen oh eight, sixteen ten Guildcrest Drive. Um, looks like you're on again, Mike.
Uh, thanks, Mayor and Council. So all of these addresses are new. So this is a property that uh last fall uh partitioned, uh so the, the map that is in your packet for this annexation uh kinda illustrates uh, um, you know, the parcels one, two, and three, that uh two of them are highlighted, the third one is not. But uh through, through that land division, uh this track A and track B were created or split out of the, the larger parcel. And uh I, I think it was last fall unless it was, I'm not fairly certain it was last fall, you did the final plat which also accepted the dedication of Guildcrest Drive, which was an easement. Um, and it's dedicated now, it's a sixty-foot wide public right-of-way. And so the request that's before you tonight is both of those property owners, uh or those properties, track A and track B have sold. And those property owners are um in the process of having building plans worked out and uh getting ready to submit for uh development this spring. And uh Public Works is, if, I don't know if they're complete yet, but they're installing water and sewer infrastructure within Guildcrest Drive uh to support this development. And uh, but in order for those two properties to connect to those services, which they've actually paid for, they need to be annexed. That's uh one of our uh ordinance requirements. And Guildcrest Drive is part of that annexation. It's uh, it's a requirement with our joint management agreement with Union County that anytime uh uh we annex properties, we also are required to annex the adjacent street right-of-way that uh serves those city properties. Um, so anyway, this is, this is kind of a re- routine request uh uh under state law when we have a hundred percent of the property owners requesting the annexation that uh state law allows us to annex them by resolution rather than going through uh an ordinance or a voter process. And uh, anyway, that's uh what's before you, and I would just ask you to support this uh on behalf of the property owners so they can move forward. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Mike? Mary Ann?
Mike, is track B then is going to be divided into two different lots because it has two different properties or two different numbers on it, addresses, I guess?
Yes, actually, track A and track B are going to be divided. Track B is currently in the process. In fact, I think they've actually received their approval, uh but uh, uh, I might have this backwards, but uh, but there, both of those properties are intended to be divided uh with a flag lot behind. You know, so there'll actually be two homes on each of those lots uh uh in the near future. Uh, I just haven't assigned a second address to the track A yet because they have not requested it.
Okay, so that will be sixteen oh six then, I'm assuming?
It will, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? Right, um. Mike, I, I'm flashing on an email I saw earlier and that, that email is relative to the um to the next agenda item, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So as you kinda go through the, your little script for uh asking for the reading by title only, just make note of that because you'll need to uh, assuming we get to that part in the next agenda item, you'll need
Okay.
Remember that step. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, anyway, uh, if there are no more questions for Mike, uh, any council discussion on this item?
I have one question, one for, Mike, how, what, I can't see this on my screen, how big this, the uh area is on track B. What is the width across the top of it?
It is roughly a hundred and sixty feet. It runs at a diagonal, so it's probably longer than that, but the total property width is about a hundred and sixty feet wide.
Okay.
It's, it's a one-acre parcel right now, so it'll be divided um into two one-half acre parcels.
Okay, and like you said, it's gonna be a flag, a flag lot then, so one will be behind it.
Yes, and I, I actually think, you know, I have to correct myself because there's not gonna be two one-half acres because I think track B, that owner, the minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet, and so I think that particular owner intends to have a smaller lot on the front and a larger lot in the back.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed resolution annexing property located at sixteen oh four, sixteen oh eight and sixteen ten Guildcrest Drive, including all of the Guildcrest Drive public street right-of-way extending west from South Twelfth Street, be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
All right, we have uh a motion and a second. Additional comments? If not, could I have a reading of the proposed resolution by title only?
A resolution of the city council, the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, declaring certain territory annexed to the city of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, specifically properties at sixteen oh four, sixteen oh eight, and sixteen ten Guild, Guildcrest Drive, Township Three South, Range Thirty-eight East, Section Seventeen B D, tax lots twelve oh one and twelve hundred and all other, or in all of the Guildcrest Drive public right-of-ways extending west from South Twelfth Street and removing said territory from the La Grande Rural Fire Protection District.
Okay, we've had a reading of the proposed resolution by title. I'll ask for roll call vote, please.
Steve Clement.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
John Bozard.
Yes.
David Glade.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Um, next item of new business is a resolution authorizing the planning division to apply for certified local development grant. Your popular guy tonight, Mike.
Yeah, well, thank you. This, this one, I think it might be a little longer discussion than originally anticipated, but uh just to uh give you uh some background, um, about every two years, uh La Grande, uh, well, I guess let me start over. As a uh you know, having a historic district in our downtown, we have a landmarks commission and uh we have a historic landmarks code. Uh, by having those things, uh, uh, we are essentially a certified local government uh in the uh State Historic Preservation Office definition, which qualifies La Grande to apply for historic preservation grants, and there's a number of things that you know, we have access to that the average property owner does not have access to because of that certified local government or what we've been terming a C L G uh status. And uh, every two years, they have certified local government grants or the C L G grants. Um, it's a different dollar amount each year. It's not competitive and essentially what they do is they take the total pot of money that's allocated uh at the state level and they divide it amongst all the C L Gs and and estimate, uh, if everybody applied for a grant, this is approximately how much you would be eligible to apply for. And this is our year. Every two years, we get an opportunity and this is our year to apply again. And uh, uh, and we, we apply every time, so, and, and use that money for some purpose. Um, this year, they're estimating the grant amount would be uh approximately ten thousand dollars. And it requires an equal match, a one-to-one match, and so we, historically, I think every year up until this year, we have used that money for projects and we've used private dollars or in-kind uh uh donation labor and so forth to match that. Uh, but this year, uh, our landmarks commission is asking for your support and approval to uh, uh, go through a, a code amendment and update process on our historic district standards. And in doing that, we'll uh, uh, they would like to hire a consultant to do that. And uh, that's pretty much, you write the consultant a check, and so uh, we will need to match that with real money and not and not in-kind uh uh funds. And so uh, uh, with the research that, that I've done and the commission has done, uh that project, uh, they're generally estimated to be somewhere between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars to do that. Uh, we're kind of ballparking that uh, um, at least with the scope of work that the landmarks commission uh desires, it's gonna be roughly a twenty thousand dollar project. And uh, so they're asking for your support to apply for this grant. That's really all you're authorizing tonight is uh the ability to apply. And then uh, assuming we're awarded this grant, uh, we would come back to you through the budget hearing process and through a different process as well at a council meeting to uh ask for ten thousand dollars to match this and your approval to accept that grant, uh, that grant award. And so that's kind of the grant in a nutshell, uh, uh, but we had this work session, we had a work session on Monday night. And so some of the issues that we talked about were, uh, you know, these standards were essentially written in nineteen ninety-nine as guidelines. They were converted into standards uh, in two thousand and nine, after significant investment has been made. We've had a lot more investment since that time. And uh, the commi- uh, the commission would like to update these standards in order to protect that investment. And there's a number of issues that they've identified. Uh, there's some subjective uh requirements in there that result in some inconsistencies in decisions or what appears to be kind of fairness or inequity and, and how uh, uh, projects are reviewed and, and uh, decisions are made. They'd like to clarify the intent of some standards and uh uh, do some rewording, remove some uh shoulds and put shalls in there. Part of their desire for uh going through the, having a consultant do this is to uh have a, a neutral party that would be unbiased and uh would not have the same influence that a, uh, that they would have or a city person would have uh with, with kind of biased opinions on what they think the standard should be. The consultant would work with the, the downtown business owners, property owners and contractors to kind of identify the intent of, of historic preservation, what kind of what our vision is, if it's changed since uh, two thousand uh, or nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and nine. What should it be today? How strict should we be? How flexible should we be? What should the standards look like as we move forward? And so uh, that's the desire of the commission and they would like to go through that process. It's been twenty-some years since we've gone through this exercise and they feel it's time and appropriate, uh, because we do have folks that have experienced some challenges in going through this process and, and uh, we think that that could be improved. So that's the proposal from the landmarks commission in a nutshell. I'm essentially the mouthpiece for that proposal for them. And then uh, I'll kind of let uh councillor Glade uh kinda talk about uh, uh, some of his review. I did send out the historic district standards to all of the council. I don't know, I mean, it was short notice, so I didn't, I don't expect any of you to have read them. Uh, David asked for them yesterday. I sent them to him and miraculously, he went through those in, in fine detail uh somehow uh last evening and, and understands them fairly well. I'm impressed. And so, and then he's done some additional phone calls with the state and done some research and, and I'll let him kind of speak on, on his uh opinion and kind of position on, on uh, on what he's learned and and uh, I'm not totally in disagreement, but I, but I'd like to have that discussion with you and then we can make a decision on how to move forward. Um, so anyway, do you have any questions on the landmarks proposal at this point before we move into uh David's comments?
So really, Mike, what we're talking about this evening is just, should you, should you go out for the grant? That's really what you're seeking approval for.
Absolutely. It's just, should I apply or not apply? It's, I'm asking, yeah, I'm just asking for your approval for either yes or no.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Mike before I turn it over to David?
Well, I have a question or comment, but let's go ahead and let David uh make his presentation. Maybe that'll answer my question.
Okay, good. Anyone else? All right, David, you're on.
Well, I mean, I, just the discussion I had with Mike was just to seek to clarify this. My only concern is, um I mean, I think we've, we've all heard about these, you know, the historic standards and some of the some of the issues that have, you know, that's run into with business owners downtown, uh, with, you know, buildings that, that qualify there. Um, my concern was just that, you know, the, the amount that we're talking about was, was more my issue. I think that's a fairly significant sum of money. I had envisioned these standards being something fairly egregious, you know, fifty or a hundred pages of legalese document. It, they're really not. It's an eighteen-page document, only about twelve pages of it are actually describing the standards. Many of those are, you know, taken up very nicely with uh photographic images to describe, you know, the changes that, that uh, that are desirable, it should be made. And I guess I put myself in the position of a business owner. If I, you know, if, if I wanted to do something different to my building uh, and I was given this document, would I be able to interpret this uh for what it's meant to be and come away with a fairly straightforward, you know, clear idea of, of what is expected of me? And I read that document and I thought, yes, this, I think it's fairly concise, it's fairly clear. Um, I, I can understand, um, yeah, Cassian, her presentation, you know, listed, listed a couple of things that she thought, you know, were maybe ambiguous wording, and I, I thought, okay, I, I can see that. But in my opinion, again, most of this, as I looked at it from that perspective, was, you know, rewording things instead of saying should or consider, we, we might change that to a must or shall, uh, you know, kind of language. But most of this looked like just semantics, uh, really. And so my question was, do we need to spend ten thousand dollars of the city's budget to, to revise this, what I think is a small, rather clear document to begin with? Or is this something that we can do on our own? And, and I, I did inquire and I, I, I might clarify one or two things with Mike because I my conversation with him afterward was when I, I got a return phone call, I was waiting for from uh, from Robert, who is the C L G coordinator, one of the two C L G coordinators for the state. Robert made clear that, um, there's, there's a couple of things that we should probably be aware of. Um, he said, in fact, as a C L G city, we do not need to hire a consultant to do things like this uh, because we actually have consulting privileges with he and Curry, who are the other coordinators. And he said, a lot of cities our size and smaller will actually call them up and um, and just maybe use some staff time, or he said, you know, that, that can be Mike or it can be, you know, somebody on the landmarks commission if we want, or we could appoint somebody else. Um, he said, it, a lot of this really is a language issue. In fact, they produced a document, I'm holding it here in my hand. This is a twenty nineteen document that is a very clear, i- it's called the Oregon Model Historic Preservation Ordinance. Uh, this was meant to be, in essence, a template for cities to design this on. It's very nice. It has highlighted in colors items that are required to be in there because of federal or state law and then other items that are maybe desirable uh from their perspective. I compared this with ours briefly and really, I think we've got a pretty good thing going to start with. So my, my concern really was more an, an issue of the amount of money that we're devoting to this. Does it, do we need to spend ten thousand dollars of the city's funding to pursue this, or can we, are there alternatives that we could consider prior to moving to that level of engagement on it? And uh, Robert was clear that there are. He thinks that it would be easy for, for somebody here in the city to sit down with him. If there are specific questions we have, we can go over the specifics. He said, sometimes they've spent hours in meetings uh with cities doing this. Those come at no charge, uh, because we're a C L G city. The second thing that he said was, if we did want to apply for the grant, we can use, uh, and I think, Mike, this may be a clarification point, he said that we can use in-kind funds from staff time instead of doing a direct money uh match. He said, we can actually use staff time match uh for that and, and maybe do like a partial consulting. Uh, because we may not need the amount of time. I, I guess I was crunching the numbers in my head and you know, ten thousand on the city end, ten thousand grant, if you pay an attorney a hundred dollars an hour, that's the equivalent of five weeks of eight to five forty-hour week work on this. And I just, I questioned whether there's value or whether we may be able to work with the landmarks commission and just say, hey, do we have a few items where we can tweak the wording, make it a little clearer, um, and then just move forward? So, okay.
Okay, good, good. That's, that's good information, David, and thank you for the, for the legwork in the background. Gary, I'm gonna go to you and then I have a question for Mike.
Okay, yeah, I think I have both a question and probably a comment as well. Mike, if this money were to be used for a consultant, that would take money away from grants we might provide to a business, is that correct?
Yes and no, because the, the, it depends on what I apply for because, I mean, I have until the end of this month. So if your answer is no, I don't think we're gonna have time to put together a different type of grant and do the research to uh, to meet the grant's middle deadline for this year, but we could talk about But we could talk about, there's there's another option to deal with that. So so technically, this isn't going to take money away from a grant opportunity for another business, because this is money that we would not receive if we don't apply for it. You know, every every two years we apply for funding for something. And the last time we applied, we we did our educational event and so it did not go towards businesses that were upgrading their buildings or property owners that were upgrading their buildings. So anyway, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. As I mentioned at our work session Monday evening, I'm inclined to agree with with David on this one. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money to put in on this rather small document. It is not difficult to change wording from a may to a should, for instance, I've done that many times writing policies during past employment. Unless there's some other clarification. I I don't, we can't remove things from this, or these are mostly required items, as I understand it. I I just don't see the complexity necessary to justify hiring a consultant for twenty thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm not hearing enough yet to convince me that that is a need, given this small, relatively straightforward document, unless there's more to the clarification process than what I'm understanding right now.
Any other questions for for Mike? Nicole, I saw you at first and then I'll go to Mary Ann.
Piggybacking on Gary's question, I have this recollection, it might just be a hallucination from the work session, that the consultant wasn't just for language changes, which which on some level are straightforward, but rather to almost facilitate a public process where we talk about how we want to handle buildings in the district that are are not historical or that don't have, are too far gone. So I, my recollection, Mike, is that it's more than just someone wordsmithing. If it's just that, I'm definitely going to apply to be this consultant. But i- if it's more than that, can you remind me of what they would be doing?
Yeah, it's it's actually much more, the the commission's intent is much more than just wordsmithing. So the commission's intent is to hold, they'd like to hold at least three public meetings that a consultant would facilitate to kind of go over what is the, what are the requirements of having historic district and having standards? And getting kind of nailing down what is the opinion and what is the vision of our downtown in the eyes of, you know, the folks that are subject to live by the historic district requirements. And to kind of go through the standards that we have are above, you know, what the minimum requirements are for historic preservation. They're less than what a lot of cities have, but but the grant would be a much larger process than wordsmithing. It is a very, it's a very significant public process that's very time consuming. It's, they would like to have a neutral party do this because, you know, I I think that the city's developed a reputation over time of, of, you know, how the historic requirements are met. And I think that having a public process that's run by a neutral party, a consultant, would be more openly accepted than having the landmarks commission or staff do that. But but you're quite right, Nicole, that it is a much larger process in wordsmithing, because the wordsmithing piece is relatively small. If we're just going to be changing some words around. But also part of that would be maybe even to change the entire formatting and the look of that document to make it much more user friendly. And and there may be some different standards that we want to consider entirely, because maybe the standard that we have is outdated language and there's a much better way to tackle that. But but that is, that's the desire of the commission is to make it a much larger, I guess, process to make sure this is done right and that we're not, you know, just putting a Band-Aid on a on a problem.
So so I'm going to go to John, Mary Ann, because I think he he's been waiting to to ask a question, so go ahead, John.
Thanks, Steve, yeah. My concern is if you don't hire the consultant, who do we get then to facilitate these public meetings that would be a neutral party in our community? I think it'd be very difficult. That's why I would vote yes for the consultant. I think we need that consultant and I agree with everybody there that has said that there's much more than just words involved in this.
Yeah, yeah, and just in response, John, if if we don't apply for the grant, our public process will be considerably less than what we would desire. And so what we would do is we would wordsmith it with our landmarks commission and staff and and Robert. And there's some other ship of staff votes that would help us to essentially do a Band-Aid. We would have a work session or two or a public meeting or two with the landmarks commission. They would finalize it, you know, based on whoever showed up at the meeting and then you'd get the recommendation for a resolution to change it. And that's that's
I think we need more than that, Mike, I think we really do. I I think we need more communications with the business people in this community. And the only way that I see that we can do that is with a consultant.
Yeah, and that's that's the commission's opinion as well, and that's why they've asked for this.
Okay, Mary Ann.
Yeah, Mike, I was just wondering. I I'm listening to what everybody's saying and I kind of have a tendency to agree with Gary though and and Dave. I think that maybe Shippo could help us enough to get through this, but I wanted to know, do you know off the top of your head how many buildings in the historic district?
I don't know the exact number, but we have probably eighty or ninety items listed on our national register for the downtown. And so I think there might even be a little over a hundred, you know, but I think that's, I'm saying eighty or ninety because I think that's how many buildings. Because some of the other items we have, like a historic fire truck, we have some things that were downtown that aren't anymore because they've been relocated that are historic. I think like the little Sacagawea, whatever, the fountain thing that's over at Mac Square is on the list. But anyway, but anyway, there's, there's a lot, there, I mean, there's eighty or ninety some buildings.
Okay, that's within the district?
Yes.
Then how many are considered historic?
Well, technically, they're all considered historic because they're in the district. And so they're all, every one of them are subject to the regulations, but there's different categories. So you have non-contributing buildings, which would be like Wells Fargo and Amquah Bank and and, you know, the, what we've called the Verizon Building, then went to the Frontier and now it's the Ziffley Fiber Building. But so those are examples of non-contributing. We have other buildings that are historic that if not are not independently listed, which is most of our historic buildings downtown, the older ones. And then we have buildings like the the Foley Towers Building across the street, City Hall. I forget how many we have that are individually listed on the national register that have a much higher level of historic integrity and value. And we have a much, you know, I guess, higher obligation to protect those.
Okay, but then do you know, I know that there's, they're all considered historic, but how many are contributing and how many are non-contributing?
I don't, I don't have that answer, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know that answer, but there's, there's I'd say the majority of them are are contributing to some level. You know, but I, but I don't know what the the quantity is.
Okay, because I haven't had a chance to read that today, I saw it today, but I didn't have a chance. So Dave, if you've read it, was it clearly defined on on what is required of non-contributing buildings?
That's honestly something that I thought we could probably clarify a little better. If you look, it's in the first few pages and there actually is a nice little map on there where we we show a map of Adams Avenue and there is, it's color coded. So that the shading, you know, shows whether the building is this category or this category or this category. I I don't think it would be difficult. And in fact, again, the state document that they provide makes it quite simple, I think, to to make a designation and say, okay, you know, these are kind of exempt, even though we may consider them within the historical district from standards. The state also made quite clear that these are, a lot of these are our decisions to make. We can decide the extent to which we want to apply these standards or not. And and so, you know, we have that capability.
Okay, all right, Mike, go ahead, Mary Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve, did you feel, Dave, that that they gave you enough guidelines on non-contributing buildings? Because that seems to be like mostly a lot of our complaints do is buildings that are non-contributing that are getting, getting required to do things that don't really go to their building anymore. Because they're not, they have, they've lost so much of the contributing part of it.
Yeah, Mary Ann, I I I would need to go through there one more time and just look at the specific statement on non-contributing buildings. But I think if it's not in there, there's, there's no reason we can't take a sentence that says, non-contributing buildings that fall within this category exempt from the following regulations. I think that would be simple enough to do.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Mary Ann? So so my given, I I'm getting a better sense of of what what might be asked of a consultant. Would we use that consultant to redesignate buildings? Would the process that we went through or that would be be done involve reviewing the buildings to to be designated? Would the standards or guidelines that we have change substantially? So there's, there's two questions there. Are in the, in the, in the review process, would that mean a review of what buildings are contributing and which ones aren't? And could we move, move buildings back and back and forth between that category?
I guess theoretically we could, that's a much larger process than we're applying for. Because, I mean, really just changing the standards as we go through, you know, this public exercise of trying to figure out what is reasonable and what is excessive, what's not reasonable. And, you know, rewrite the standards in a manner that is acceptable to both the city and the property owners that are subject to those requirements.
Okay.
And then we adopt those by resolution. As soon as we start messing with the national register, that's a federal process that is much more involved than what we have in mind.
So so the next question then is, if if the focus for this review would be on the existing language, how much would have to really change? I mean, David seems to think that, you know, there are some semantical elements to it. Nicole and and John think that thinks that we need to have more public input on that. Could, could we lessen the standards? Or is there a base below which we cannot go in terms of the requirements that we have for those existing buildings? And would the planning or review process identify that base and make changes to our guidelines accordingly?
Well, without having a consultant assistant, assistance to help us, the public process is not going to be a very robust process and it's not going to be as extensive as it should be. And so I don't disagree with, you know, David's recommendation. I think that there's, you know, one scenario is that we just take a stab at it. And if it, if it appears to be too cumbersome and challenging, then I think next year, since we're, since every two years, you have, you have to wait an extra year. So you you can't apply every single year for the grant. So if I pass it up this year, there's a possibility that if it's offered again next year, since I skipped a year, I might be eligible to apply again next year. And so, so one scenario is that we just take a stab at it. I'm a little bit concerned with trying to delineate and define the different types of historic buildings from non-contributing to just historic to the ones that are contributing. And trying to figure out, how do you apply those standards fairly to the different categories? Because right now, we just have, we just have one set of standards that apply to everybody equally, even though we do identify the different types of buildings. It's not clear what is flexible and what is not based on your level of historic value based on those categories. And so we could take a stab at that, but part of the challenge is, is I don't anticipate that the landmarks commission is going to want to relax any of the standards. They're just going to want to clarify them, because without going through a robust process, you know, properties have gone through a fairly significant process in their restoration. And some of our property owners that have gone through the process, they don't think we're strict enough. And they think we're being way too lenient on other properties that are doing historic projects and they're not doing it right. And then we have folks that feel that we're being way too stringent. And I don't think that we're going to end up with relaxing the standard any, if we do this ourselves or relaxing them much, because we're not going to want to go backwards in preservation. And so that's the value of having a consultant do this, because they would be a neutral party that would be able to identify this standard is too strict, this one is too lenient. And they could find the balance that is acceptable for everybody. And the and the business owners and property owners and the contractors that do this would then have buy-in and they would essentially be, you know, recreating the standards in the image that would be acceptable to them that they could live with. And as opposed to us deciding that for them. But but we certainly, we certainly could go through this process and edit it ourselves, take a stab at it and just make some minor changes and just see if we could live with it. And that would be an option that, you know, might be worth trying.
Okay, Mary Ann, I see you've unmuted, so a question?
Yeah, I did. Wouldn't this, wouldn't Robert from Shippo be willing to come out and do something like that too with us?
They they could, but you know, honestly, they we need somebody that's going to actually take a stronger position. And so our experience with Shippo, even on projects that we've done, is they are hesitant to provide firm advice because they don't want to be responsible for the outcome. It's our decision and so they'll, they'll provide us some guidance and then we make the decision. But in some of these cases, we want them to make, is this right or is this wrong? And they won't tell us that. They say, well, that's really up to you. And so they might come out, I know in the last couple of years, they haven't had the funding to to come out and and do these kind of exercises with us. So a lot of it's done over the phone or we would try to do it, you know, through like a Zoom thing. And have a kind of like a little work session. But, you know, maybe once we get through the this COVID stuff and then maybe they'll travel more, we can try to nail them down to actually spend a day or two here to do this. But it's, while their service is free, you got to keep in mind it is free. So you that, so you get a quality of free service. And and, you know, you get what you pay for. And so, you know, so a lot of it is over the phone and they're reviewing stuff that you draft and you provide to them and comment. But they generally will come out for one workshop and and help you, but they're not going to provide the same level of service that we would hope to get out of a consultant.
All right, lots of conversation here. Any other questions or comments? Gary, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, I I guess I'm being a little obtuse tonight, because the more I hear, the more confused I get. We're talking about clarifying standards. And yet, at the same time, I thought I was hearing Mike say they didn't really want to lessen the standards. I know that we've had at least one hearing, as well as a couple of other questions involving a a business or a potential business that was doing things that had not been approved by the landmarks commission. They were held rather strongly to the need to do so. I don't want to get into changes here where somebody else has some heartburn because they were being held to a standard that maybe we're changing. And yet we say we're not looking to lessen them. My understanding of historic districts has always been that it's, well, maybe said in stone is too strong a word, but not a lot of wiggle room. And it's hard for me to understand how you can have historic standards if they're being determined piece by piece by a a local jurisdiction. I I guess all of this is why I'm just feeling kind of confused about it and and why there is this seemingly very strong need to engage in a public process. Based on what I've just said, I'm not clear on what that's going to accomplish for us. Maybe there's more latitude here than I think there is, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's actually a lot of latitude in the standards, Gary. So like using windows as an example, that's one of the hot topics. And so in the historic district, I mean, historic windows are wood windows. That's, they've always been wood windows. And and so when as time has gone on, there's been other products that have come up. I mean, we have metal windows, you've got fiberglass windows, you've got vinyl windows. And I mean, it's fairly well known that vinyl windows are not historic. And so And so, that's something that, since we've switched from guidelines to standards, the commission has been very strict on, on how you, you apply vinyl windows and whether you can even consider them at all. But one of the more common comparisons is, historically, there was a wood window in this location. And can I replace it with a metal window? Because there are metal windows that, at some period of our historic time window, our timeframe, that metal was acceptable material. And it's identified in our standards as being acceptable. But, you know, then as you consider an application, it's how strict you want to be. You know, that building was constructed in the 1890s, a wood window is, is the historically appropriate window to put there. Is it acceptable to allow them to replace it with a metal window instead that looks similar? Yeah, those are some of the questions that come up, that if it's an alley window, then we've sometimes allowed for an alternative. And it depends on, you know, the, the circumstance. And those are probably the more well-known issues of where conflicts arise. And, and, but a consult, a consultant would help us go through that exercise and determine, how strict do we want to be with our standards? And I think a consultant and a public process that includes all of those folks, that we mentioned, you know, business owners, property owners and contractors, would help us define which standards are more strict versus not. Because if we do this ourselves, we're certainly, you know, we feel the standards are pretty flexible as they are. So, we probably would be less inclined to go, "Oh, let's, let's eliminate that one or make that one easier." Because we already feel that they're pretty easy for the most part, but others do not.
Well, we've been strict up to this point with some businesses and some. So, I guess that is becoming part of my concern now. If we go in there and change a bunch of things, maybe make them easier, when we've already held other businesses to a particular standard, I got a problem with that.
Well, and, and that's a concern that has been expressed to us as well, which is one of my concerns of, of why I would be a little nervous to do this myself and lighten up standard. Adding clarification, doing minor amendments and just hope we can live with it, I think is a reasonable approach. But it may not solve the problem that we are experiencing.
You, you good, Gary?
I think so.
Okay, John?
Well, I, yeah, thanks, Steve. I, I just think this is too important a process for our community and the historic district not to spend $10,000 out of an approximately, what, $10, $11 million general fund budget? We're talking peanuts here to get a consultant in that can come in and run this and do it properly.
You know, I'm, I'm going to just make a comment in, in, I think John in, in makes a really good point. This is more complicated than just, I think, some semantic changes. I think what we're looking at here are a consideration of what we have as guidelines now, and converting them over to standards that are have perhaps a little bit more binding element to them, rather than being more flexible. And, I, you know, the nuancing of that process is, I think, best handled outside of, of people that are, maybe have, have a stake in this game. And by having a, a consultant, we might get a better product. I see David has his hands up. Nicole, if you, are you asking? Okay, David, go ahead.
So, I mean, I, I guess, I have a, a couple of concerns here. One is, you know, addressing the, first of all, I think, if I can offer this, I think we're in a poor position to vote on this if we haven't read the standards ourselves. It's, I, I know we need to rush a vote, you know, soon, because this is time-sensitive. But I don't think it's a good idea to vote on something that we haven't read, if that makes sense. So, you know, I, I would suggest to my fellow counselors, it's a good idea to read the document. It's 18 pages. It, it'll take you, you know, 20 minutes, maybe. Because to me, when I read it, it's pretty straightforward. And Nicole made the comment at the work session, you know, I think she hit the nail on the head. She said, "Is this an issue of somebody not doing their homework and not reading it, and then complaining afterward when they didn't understand the standard they were being held to?" I think, personally, I think that's part of it. I think some of the complaints we're getting, because I, I read this and I think, okay, I can understand this. This isn't legalese. It's, to me, it's perfect for our community. The flexibility that we've talked about, that's a two-edged sword. Flexibility is a good thing. It allows us to look at projects on an individual basis and say, you know what, it makes sense for this. We're dealing with projects from different time periods. Quite honestly, project, you know, buildings from the 1920s are different from the buildings from the 1950s. And yet, both are going to be held to some of these standards, but metals allowed on one, not on another. You know, we need the kind of flexibility in there. If you've ever seen these documents from big cities, they can be leviathans. These can be absolute behemoths. My fear is that we get a consultant involved in here from big city, and that we may be looking at turning our very nice functional document into something that, you know, to solve this issue of subjectivity, we're going to be limiting the flexibility that is desirable for a community of our size. When I spoke with SHPO, I was impressed that they really view this as, this is a document that's functional for the community that owns it. Once we meet some minimum federal and state standards, it's ours. We can craft it to exactly what we want it to be. LeGrand should be different from Salem's and from Portland's and from Venice, I think. And, and so, you know, that does allow us the opportunity to create what we envision our downtown historic district being. Again, my, my fear is, is what happens if we bring a consultant in? If it's capturing the value, I would suggest that all of the council members review this document before making an opinion on it. That, that's just, you know, my own kind of personal thoughts on that.
So, so before, I see, I see three unmuted people. But before we, before I go to, I think I'll go Mary Ann, John, and then Robert. I do want to say that I think that's a reasonable idea. But our vote this evening is, should they go for the grant? And there will be another point in the process. The grant could be awarded, but Mike would have to come back to us for another $10,000. So, you know, my thought would be, we move forward, we give Mike the opportunity to write the grant. We then, we have, all the counselors receive the, the standards and guidelines that we have and read them over and understand them. Come down to budget hearings and Mike says, "I need another $10,000 because I got the grant." Then we can have a conversation, you know, along the same lines of, do we want to fund this thing in total? Or do we want to not? I think we need to kind of focus on, on what's the point before us? Do we want to allow the grant to go forward? And if we don't, then, you know, end the story. If we do, it gives, it still gives us time to review the documents and have a better understanding. I see Mary, I see John is muted back again. Mary Ann, I'm going to bring you in.
Okay, well, that was exactly what I was going to suggest, is if we go ahead and approve this, all we're doing is approving the application of the grant. Not that we're going to accept the grant or not, that we're going to spend our $10,000 on it. So, that would give us the time to read it and discuss it at another meeting. Our budget time, or maybe even a work session, I don't know. But it will give us time to read it and decide it. So, that's, because I'm leaning toward what Dave is saying, but I do think we should just go ahead and approve the grant.
Okay. So, Robert, I see you're unmuted.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mary Ann. You, you made a couple of the points that I was going to make, which is, even from the discussion tonight, I don't think the council's in a position to buy in one way or the other. And what we're really, what we're really asking for is to go ahead and start the process so that we could, down the road, pull the trigger to do this. And I think there are a lot of good points on both sides. I think one of the things that, that we haven't touched on is, we ask our volunteers to serve on these committees and they live this stuff. They spend an inordinate amount of time sitting down with applicants and building owners and contractors and walking through these applications in excruciating detail. And they're charged with approving with conditions these landmarks projects. And that body has asked the council for some help to refine these standards, to get some outside help, to, to get clarity and buy-in. And so, I think it's important to not lose sight of the fact that we do have a, an advisory group that lives this, that feels strongly that there is a need to do this. So, what I would, what I would suggest would be for the council to approve the application for the grant. And then, staff can work on the scope of work in some more detail. That'll give the council an opportunity to spend some time looking at the guidelines. And perhaps before the, you know, final decision, we get back in a room with the Landmarks Commission, with the council in a much better position to ask more detailed questions about some of the nuances, to make a good qualitative decision about, do we accept the grant if we're grant, if we get it? Or do we say, well, we don't really need to do that and we can go, go another route instead? But I, I would hate for us to essentially be a year or two behind in the process, because we're, we're not in a position where we can make a good final decision tonight, when in fact, we're not being asked to make a final decision tonight. So, that's my two cents, Mary. Thank you.
You know, with that, I think I, I'd like to entertain a motion on this item. And again, the focus is, should we even go for the grant? If anybody wants to make that motion.
I move that the proposed resolution authorizing Planning Commission staff to apply for the certified local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, State Historic Preservation Office, and authorizing the city manager to sign the grant application and relay the documents by reading, by, wait, documents be read by title only, put to vote and passed.
Second.
Okay. Any additional comments and discussion? I know this is, seems like this one's pretty intense. I think like, I, I feel like I, I missed a lot by not being at the meeting Monday. But I, you've all brought up some really, really good points, and I think it's worthwhile. At least putting in the, putting in the grant, and then we can have a, we can have more discussion about this further down the line. We have a motion in a second.
Sorry, Steve, can I ask really fast?
Certainly.
If we, if we apply for it, though, as an opportunity cost, have we lost then the opportunity to apply for a grant next year? And my, the other question I had is, is Mike, do we have any ready-to-go projects that could also be put together for a grant if we didn't do this? Do we have another downtown historic project grant that could feasibly be put together in the timeframe? Or is that just not a possibility?
At, at this point, we do not have any applicants, I guess, sitting in the background. We haven't been approached by anybody. And so, we haven't put any thought into alternatives for, you know, this grant. So, we have essentially two weeks to put this application together and get it submitted. And, I mean, that's a pretty tight timeframe to write a scope of work and put a budget with it, because those are all part of the requirements. And, and, you know, and, and the Landmarks Commission, you know, being volunteers and unpaid, they're going to be doing this in the evening. Because we don't really have any other meetings, you know, with them to work this out. So, it's, you know, so something Robert said is, I mean, this is, this is a lot to ask of, of folks that just donate their time, because, you know, they care. But anyway, but to get to your other question, I don't know the answer. If we get awarded a grant, generally it's a two-week, or a two-week, a two-year budget. So, we, we usually spend it in, in one year, just because of the way our budget cycle is and we can't commit funding to the second year. But the way the grants are structured, it's essentially a two-year window that we have to, to spend that. So, if we get awarded the grant and don't use it, I don't know if there's a consequence where we suddenly lose our window. Where if I don't apply at all and it's available next year, I'm probably eligible to apply. But if I get awarded the grant and turn it down, I don't know if I lose my opportunity or not. That's something I'll have to ask.
Okay. Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, that kind of raised a question I was about to ask Mike. If you presumably have to include a, a budget with the grant, I'm sure you do. How do you identify the use of that grant? If we want to hold off on making a final decision about the consultant, and if we don't have any projects on the stove to pursue, what do you identify in that budget?
Yeah. Well, well, in this case, we're applying for a consultant to, you know, help us with the public process and, and, and this rewrite of the historic district standards. So, that's what we're applying for, and that's what the commission, the commission has already been in contact with consultants to kind of help develop a scope of work, so we know what it looks like. And what is a typical price tag that goes, you know, with, you know, them, whether they're holding a Zoom meeting or whether they physically are able to come here and, and hold a public meeting? Our commissioners are, are in the process right now of developing, what's that price tag look like for a budget? So, anyway, so that's, that's what we're going to be developing and submitting. If we go a different direction, I don't know if we have time to put together a scope of work and a budget and all of that in two weeks. And so.
To support the hiring of a consultant, and then we don't do that.
Right, and that's a risk, that's a risk that we're going to have to take anyway, because I'm relying, we can't commit that funding for next year right now anyway. And so, I'm relying on the budget hearing process. If we're successful, I'm relying on the budget hearing process to support the application. And if it doesn't, then I'm going to have to turn it down anyway. But, but anyway, that's the risk, because just the timing of the way these things line up is, if I wait for the budget hearing process, I'm going to miss my grant opportunity. So, it's, it's a chicken and an egg thing. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm kind of forced to gamble one way or another.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. Robert?
I was just going to say, I would be less worried about applying for a grant and turning it down because we didn't get budget approval. The state saying, well, you can't apply now for two years because you had one approved that you didn't take. I think it's a different circumstance. If you're applying for a grant from, say, a family foundation, get approved and then you don't pull the trigger. So, I, I think it's a little bit of a different circumstance.
Okay. All right. I'll ask the city recorder then for a reading of the resolution. By title only, please.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of LeGrand, Union County, Oregon, authorizing City of LeGrand Planning Division staff to apply for a local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, State Historic Preservation Office for updating and rewriting the downtown historic district standard. Authorizing city manager Robert H. Stroke to sign the grant application and any documents related to accepting the grant if awarded.
All right, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Muesner?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Good conversation, good discussion, great questions. We have lots left to learn still on this, I think. All right, third item of new business is approving the Farmer, Farmers Market Memorandum of Agreement for Use of the City Property. This one is Mr. Spence, so have at it.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you can see, of course, the Farmers Market's been using Mac Square for some time. We entered it into a memorandum of agreement in 2011, only for the street closure. So, this is a formal agreement that details partnership, establishing days, fees, park use, street closure details, responsibilities, et cetera. So, I'll entertain any questions.
Questions for Stu? Seems like it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's, it's, it's there, it's established, it's going, it's regular, and even survived COVID this last summer. Not quite to the level of, of participation as it has in the past. And hopefully, this summer will be a little bit more back to active level than it has been. Mary Ann, question?
Yes, Stu, I've noticed that, that you're asking them to play, pay, excuse me, 33% or a third of the music license fee.
percent or a third of the music license fee. Do they use the music a third of the time? I mean, is that, who else uses the music besides them?
Yeah, good question. They came to us about five years ago because they were being not audited, but they were ever. So they came to us and said, would, would you, could, could we partner on this? Because we were already paying for a music license for the pool and the parks and rec programs, like concerts in the park. So it's split between the pool, one-third, the recreation program, concerts in the park, and they pay one-third instead of paying a hundred percent. We're being good partners by paying two-thirds of it for them.
Okay. So is that music license then only down at Mac Square?
No.
Or is it any place downtown?
City of La Grande events and activities. Yeah. So since we're a cosponsor of that, it counts.
Okay. So does it count for crazy days too?
I, I have no idea. I'd have to research that one.
Okay. Just curious.
Any other questions for, for Stu?
Mine was actually the same thing. Is it BMI and ASCAP, Stu?
Yep.
And, and so in the one section, it does say the city will coordinate and pay those fees. And then later it says they'll pay a third of them. It, it's a little bit confusing. You might say the city will pay, coordinate and pay a portion of them, because it, it reads as if you're going to pay all of them, which I thought was super cool until I kept ready, reading.
Yeah. That's probably a really good catch. We can probably change that between Kayla and I. I can't even print this document. That's a long story, but I'm sure Kayla can help me.
Any other questions for Stu? So on the motion, Robert, do we need to ask for an amendment or as amended for that, that item just now?
I think you can just say as discussed.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion along those lines.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement between the city and the La Grande Farmer's Market for the use of Mac Square and Fourth Avenue, including the changes discussed regarding the language around music licensing.
Second. Okay, we have a second from John. Any additional comments? Robert and I, I apologize, any public testimony on this? No. Okay. Then I will call for a roll call.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Miesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on new business is adopting the city manager, city manager's top priorities for fiscal year 2021, 22. Robert, this will be probably synopsis of, of, of just the council's priorities, not the urban renewal districts. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. So the, what we do is we have the, the city council and the agency both adopt the goals and priorities, because there is overlap. And we have the city council approve the retreat summary for the actions that we did on night two. The agency, we have some other business for the agency will meet and also approve the priorities and the retreat summary. And in your packet, what you have is the retreat summary. It is comprised of the topic list that was provided, that included some background information. And then the red writing on the document is actually the summary of the conversation that we had at the retreat and kind of the action items and guidance that we received. And then the final piece is the, you get to city district managers' top priorities. And I'll go ahead and, and read those real quickly for anybody that's watching that doesn't have access to the document. Fiscal management, continue to manage the city's finances within limited resources to provide highest possible level of service to the city of La Grande. COVID-19 recovery, continue to take all necessary actions to comply with state and federal mandates related to COVID-19 pandemic, as well as identify and implement policies and programs to assist in the recovery efforts within the city's resources. Economic development, continue to implement the urban renewal plan and economic development strategies approved by the city council slash urban renewal agency. Urban, which is a wildland urban interface, in concert with Union County and other agencies, take actions to assure La Grande is prepared in the event of a wildfire or other natural disaster, such as the ones that devastated other communities in Oregon in 2020. General fund capital improvements, identify funding sources and strategy to address major capital needs. Housing, complete the comprehensive housing, production strategy, and upon completion and adoption, implement the strategy. FEMA maps and land use code amendments, complete the public process and submit it to FEMA for updating the city's floodplain maps, complete the revisions and adoption of the city land use codes as necessary. Then finally staffing, take necessary actions to address critical staffing issues, including but not limited to hard to fill positions and succession planning for key positions. So we provided this to the council in advance, so you had an opportunity to kind of see that, because there were two of the goals and priorities I had to do some wordsmithing on post-retreat, and I didn't get any suggested changes or edits to that. So be happy to answer whatever questions you have.
All right. Questions for Robert?
Can I ask a, I noticed the website was something that we had discussed. Is that something that we should consider including on this? And I'm sorry, that didn't come to mind earlier, Robert, but I, I didn't know if we wanted to include the website in here as all, at all or, or not.
I think that that is, it's in one of the two. I know that our intent is that we are going to move forward with the upgrade of the website. That one might actually be under the, let me see. Yeah, we might've covered that under the other one, but we don't need to expand on it here, because it's something that we're going to do between the two.
Any other questions for Robert? Any public comments, Robert?
No, sir.
All right. I'll entertain a motion then. Motion?
I move that the city district managers' top priorities for fiscal year 2021, 2022 is discussed during the annual council retreat on January 26, 2021, and outlined on the attached city council retreat goals and priority summary be adopted as presented.
Second.
Additional comments or discussion? Could I have a roll?
If I, before you do that, I just wanted to comment. The website's on page eight. So it is in this. Top of page eight in red.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. All right. I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Miesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item on new business is appointing citizens to Park and Rec Advisory Commission. The Park and Rec Advisory Commission currently has one vacancy and we have one, one applicant. And so makes that pretty easy to carry on. I move that Steve Antel be appointed to the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission for the remainder of a three-year term expiring December 31, 2023.
Second.
Right. Council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Steve Clement?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Miesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So on this next item of new business, this was moved from the consent agenda to new business for the, for the reason that I feel I need to recuse myself as being a part owner of side A. So I'd like to turn this over to Gary Lillard, Mayor Pro Tem, to handle it and then we'll move on.
Okay. This item has to do with a liquor license for on, full on-premises sales for side A brewing. Robert, I presume you're going to handle this one?
Uh, no, actually Chief Bill's got it.
Oh, okay. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Scott McConnell of La Grande has applied as a limited liability company, side A Brewing LLC located 1219 Washington Avenue in La Grande for a full on-premises commercial license. Side A Brewing currently holds a brewery public house license. A full on-premise commercial license allows the establishment to sell and serve distilled spirits, malt beverages, wine and cider for consumption on the premises. They may also sell malt beverages, wine and cider to individuals in a securely covered container for consumption off of the licensed premises. They are eligible to apply to get pre-approval to cater some events off the licensed premises and apply for a special event license. I happy to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Questions for Chief Bell? Yeah. Thank you, Chief. Any council discussion on this item? Not hearing any, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the liquor license for side A brewing.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Okay. Any additional council discussion before we take the votes? Very good. Kayla, roll call vote, please.
Just for clarifications, Nicole, can I get you to say and sign by the mayor? Yes, actually sign the application as well.
That we approve and sign the license?
Yeah, by the mayor.
By the mayor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Steve Clement is abstaining. Gary Lillard?
Yes.
John Bozart?
Yes.
David Glade?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Miesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Steve, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Gary. So this evening, I know, well, that finishes, that completes our, our new business. This evening, we have, I know of, of at least one staff comment. Our rare student, well, she's not a student anymore. Our rare participant is, is going to make a presentation to the council on some work that she's been doing and talking to local businesses. And Christine, why don't you introduce her and then we'll turn it over to Lori?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I would like to introduce and reintroduce Lori McKee. Lori is our rare intern helping with economic development and the Ignite Center this year. And during the month of December, Lori made a number of phone calls to, specifically to our restaurants to do check-ins and see how they were doing. So she's prepared a report on that experience and her findings, and she will go ahead and present that at this time.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here. After speaking with the mayor, it was decided that it would be beneficial for me to report the information that I obtained through phone calls that were made to La Grande restaurants. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak today. These calls were made to restaurants in La Grande inquiring about how businesses are doing and what specific assistance they might need right now. From a total of 57 calls, 24 calls were answered and information was received. For those who were not reached, voicemails were left and follow-up calls will be conducted. These calls have been made since the end of December, as Christine had mentioned, and restaurant businesses can still contact me at 541-786-8512 to continue giving their input. So from calls made to several coffee shops in La Grande, a few comparisons can be made from these conversations. Coffee shops, which operate solely on drive-through, express limited concerns to being open and have experienced minimal operational differences due to COVID-19 restrictions. In-house coffee shops, however, are experiencing more difficulty from being closed to indoor seating. From calls made to several fast food restaurants, operations are seen to be functioning normally, if not more, compared to pre-COVID-19 restrictions. Notably, many explain that since sit-down is not an option, many consumers are funneled to their businesses as a result from consumers, from consumers not going to other restaurants that normally run on inside seating. And from calls made to sit-down restaurants, it is seen that COVID-19 restrictions have limited hours and menus for locally owned restaurants. Many have had to let employees go while some are running solely off volunteer work or the owner taking on all responsibilities. It is notice, notable that these businesses that struggle the most are locally owned. When asked about how these businesses' operations will change, many answered by saying they feel restricted from making any plans, as they do not know what the future holds on a week-to-week basis. Some expressed getting their business online as a struggle, and it will be a priority for Ignite when the new technical assistant grant from Business Oregon is received to help get businesses online. There are select restaurant businesses that are doing fine and express no immediate risk to closing. It is noticed, notable that many businesses that express less difficulties due to restrictions have received, have received form of funding through grants and/or loans, and these businesses express great appreciation for the efforts that are done by you, the city and its partners.
That's, is that it, Lori?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any, any questions for Lori? And I, and I'll preface before I, before I open it up. Couple of weeks ago, I think it was, Lori and I met in a Zoom conference for a chat and I asked what she'd been up to and she talked about this and I felt that it would be good to share what she had learned with, with the council. We hear, we often hear, rightly so, the generic statement that our business, our businesses are hurting. And I thought it was, it was interesting for her to say that, yes, businesses are being affected by COVID, but it's not, it's not equal across the board. I don't know, if you've driven by Adams and Nell's and Out, but sometimes you, you can't get in the driveway at Nell's and Out. And, and, and yet on the other hand, Mama Cita's and Tendy Poe can't put anybody inside and they don't really have the facilities to, to cover for that. So what I think what, what Lori has found sort of puts some little more definition to what businesses are being affected the most and what they feel about the money that they've received. So questions for Lori? Any questions? My, my only question is probably to either Lori or Christine is, how much longer do we, do we get your service, your help? Are we, are we running out of time?
We're, we're past the halfway point. Lori Bill will be with us through the end of July.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you, Lori. I agree. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah. My thanks to her for the presentation. I mean, it was quite interesting, well worth doing and presented well. Thank you.
Um, one, one piece of clarification, Lori. Obviously Denny's is not a, it is locally owned, but it's also a, a larger chain. Have you had a response from Denny's? And if so, what, what, I mean, I hate to pinpoint an individual business in this situation, but it seems sort of unique to our homegrown restaurants. What have you found? Did you find anything?
Um, I will clarify, when I say locally owned, I do mean like non-chain restaurants. I have found that the chain restaurants are doing fine. I have found that the chain restaurants are doing fine. Most have had to let go of employees, so they are running on fewer employees, but they are expressing less difficulties compared to unique restaurants to La Grande.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
Steve, that we have had three businesses that are affiliated with chain businesses, two of them being restaurants, that have shut down recently.
So I just want to clarify that a little bit. I think the distinction is the fast-food restaurants with the drive-through windows versus the chain sit-down restaurants. And one of the restaurants that closed, closed for franchise reasons. Another one of those is closing their stores nationwide, and they were struggling before COVID. So those restaurants and chain stores that were having a hard time before COVID, they're really, really struggling now. And, well, we saw that with Bell's and the transition that we were going to have with Gordmans not being able to come in, because that entire parent company and chain of stores went bankrupt. So overall, a lot of our businesses are still struggling, but those with the capacity to do the drive-throughs are better positioned in terms of the restaurants.
Excellent. Again, thank you very much, Lori. Appreciate it. And thank you, Christine, for bringing her up on this. Excellent. Any other staff, any other staff comments? City manager comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple things. Don't forget, we have the Urban Renewal Agency work session on Monday night. That is to talk about the funding levels for the various programs. I sent out an email today that has the excerpts from the retreat that we're going to be going over. And then you also should have received this week, or maybe it was late last week, the monthly report. And we've added to the monthly report at the end a new section on grants over $3,000 for visibility. We had talked about that when we were doing the work session on the audit, that we wanted to have better visibility of the various grants and the status. So we did make that change, and that's been added. And there is, within that document, an updated council work session and meeting schedule. Some of the work sessions are kind of penciled in and tentative, some of them we've already firmed up. So just to be aware that that's in there. And then the last thing, just kind of to springboard off of the question about the website. We have put together, we're kind of in the process of putting together a working group to move forward with the city's website. So that was all I had that I wanted to cover, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call for council comments in the order that I have, I see people on my screen. So Justin, any comments?
I just want to tell Mr. Robert happy birthday. Hope you have a good night.
Thank you.
Comments, John?
Oh, no, I'm fine. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, Mary Ann? You moved it again. Okay, there you are.
I was just going to ask Christine, but now I can't remember what I was going to ask her, so I'll skip that one. Happy birthday, Robert.
Thanks.
And I just wanted you guys to know that Main Street, along with the Chamber, we are doing a month-long March into Spring shop hop for downtown, starting on the first, going all the way through the end of the month, to try to get encouraged shoppers downtown.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. David?
No, just to thank you to Robert and Mike for being so helpful on providing some background information on things.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, David. Gary?
Oh, just very quickly, I'll mention that we did have a senior council meeting via Zoom clear back on, I think it was the 13th of January. Wasn't any particular information that we haven't heard before here. I did let them know that David has been assigned as the alternate, so they are acquainted with that, and looking forward to meeting with him at some point.
Okay, good. Nicole?
Quickly, the Union County Chamber of Commerce has a new website, and it's awesome. And so if you haven't been to, visit unioncounty.org, I think. Check it out. It's really good. The photography is outstanding, finally. And the curation of things to do in La Grande and the Valley is pretty darn good, so I'm happy with that. It's still going to be adjusted, and just so you have some sense when you look at it, there will be seasonal tweaks that kind of highlight what's going on. So you go to it now, you see a bunch of snow and mountains, and that won't be the case in July, one presumes. So anyway, happy about that work, and that's it for now.
The only thing I have to share is a text message I received the other day, and Chief Bell may know about this, and it was about the Grand Ron Hospital now has a secure subscription drug deposit box like we had at the police station. And this gives people an opportunity to throw away their prescription drugs at the hospital. And I know when we were doing the drug take-back day, that hundreds of pounds of prescription drugs were collected. And having this service available 20, like, I'm assuming it's regularly available 24/7, but perhaps the chief can comment on that. Any comments, Chief Bell, on the hospital's new Dropbox?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was aware that that was going to happen. I wasn't aware that it had gone live. I don't know for sure what the hours of availability are, but I'm very excited about that. And I will share that I suspect that we're going to have other locations over time that will develop. It would be my hope that all of the locales that actually sell or dispense drugs would eventually be able to take them back. And in the meanwhile, I will share with you that the police department will continue our efforts. We have the Dropbox in our lobby, 24 hours a day, seven days a week availability, and we'll do our drug take-back events twice a year, one in April and then again in October. And if at some point those drugs are being taken back to the pharmacies where they're purchased and the police department is no longer needed, then we'll reassess at that time. But we don't have any plans to change our efforts in the meanwhile.
It's nice to have multiple locations around the community for that, so I do appreciate it. And with that, I'll adjourn our meeting, and we'll see you all on Monday night for our Urban Renewal Agency work session. Take care.
Good night.